Been having that a long time, buddy. Uh? Well, when you gonna, when you gonna go cold turkey and stop? That's what it, that's what it took me, cold turkey. Uh-oh. Stole them in the trash and refused to go by. That's what I did.
If, if the project didn't, mine wasn't so bad. It came up at all even peripherally, like for the other two. Different. Mm-hmm.
You know I was telling now. I, I finished it.
You can do it.
I finished it.
Believe me, you feel so much better in time, not right away, but... I know I did.
There, for all practical purposes, he is the city engineer. Little pre-dinner with the commission, the community director takes him out for dinner, and I got invited to go to dinner with them.
Okay, welcome everyone. Good evening. Welcome to the planning commission meeting for the city of Victorville, March 11th, 2020. I'll call this meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Kurt.
Here.
Vice Chair Marsh.
Here.
Commissioner Wells.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Harriman.
Here.
Thank you. Next we'll have the invocation led to us by Commissioner Huber, along with the pledge by Commissioner Harriman. Please rise.
We gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Amen.
First up, we have a set of minutes that we need to deal with from the February 12th, 2019 meeting.
I move that we accept the February 12th, 2020, 20, um, planning commission minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wells, with a second by Commissioner Huber, to approve the minutes of the February 12th, 2020, regular planning commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right, uh, starting with agenda item number one, staff report, please.
Yes, Chairman, Commissioners, agenda item number one is PLN 1728. It's a site plan and a lot merger to allow for the development of an approximately one million square foot speculative industrial building on a 45-acre building site with a mitigated negative declaration located within the Southern California Logistics Airport at the southwest corner of Phantom West in Nevada Avenue, also known as Lot 19. Uh, this item was left open and continued indefinitely at the February 13th, 2019 planning commission meeting to allow time for the applicant and the owner to engage prospective building tenants, as well as discuss the project with two groups, two groups in opposition of the project. Those two entities letters. Very minimal comments. AF has also received a letter of opposition reiterating. Already been addressed in their response to comments. That said, project meets all municipal code standards. Industrial design guidelines. AF recommends adopting the attached mitigated negative declaration with monitoring and reporting program. Opting resolution. Five zero, which would be PLN 1700028, subject.
Any questions of staff on, on number one? Hey, thank you. I'll go ahead and open up the, uh, public hearing on, uh, agenda item number one. Is the, is the applicant or representative want to speak at all?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jason Huber. I'm the development manager for Sterling Development, uh, representing the Lot 19 project at SCLA. Uh, as we're accustomed to doing, I just wanted to take my time, uh, here tonight to express our gratitude for city staff for making this possible. Uh, Scott Webb, Mike Strazinski in the planning department, um, Sophie, see you on the side over there. You're not outside of my view. Uh, Brian Gangler in engineering who has a fill-in tonight, but, uh, and also Kevin Collins in the building department. Uh, it's not without this group that we get to this point today, so, uh, our sincere appreciation for you guys, um, and thank you. I'd also like to, to thank our, our friends from, uh, Launa, Labor's International Union of North America Local 783, and the carpenters union for their support on this project. The last part is, I would just like to make myself available to any of the commissioners for any additional comments you may have.
Any comments for Mr. Huber?
Uh, Mr. Chair, before we go further, there were some disclosures I thought we were going to make. Totally, thank you.
Um, no que, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do have a couple more cards, and before we move on to that, I would like to, uh, uh, make a ex parte disclosure that on this agenda item, uh, the applicant, uh, had, which is, uh, the Sterling group, had reached out to me and wanted to meet with me and share their project with me and see if I had any questions. Um, it was a nice meeting, and basically it was, uh, what was found in the staff report. I don't have any other, uh, new information on the project to report.
And I too, uh, met with, um, a representative from Sterling. Um, ours was, uh, my meeting with them was a more of a meet and greet. Um, it was the, what was, uh, discussed as far as the project, um, uh, here, um, there wasn't a lot of discussion. It was more in general, um, my, my term, how long I've been in Victorville, growing up in Victorville. Uh, just a, just a, it was just a meeting, uh, and a handshake and a cup of coffee.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Public hearing still open. I have, uh, I have two cards here for this item, um, Jose Ramirez.
Chair, Commissioners, I thank you for your time. Uh, my name's Jose Ramirez. I'm a proud member of Launa, uh, Labor's International Union of North America. I belong to, uh, Labor's Local 783, covering San Bernardino, Año Mono Counties. So, like I said, we, we represent a large area, and a lot of members that live here in the, in the high desert, so, um, we represent the hardworking families, uh, and we can, we come in support of staff's recommendation of approving this project. Um, we represent hardworking families here in the, in San Bernardino Ca, uh, San Bernardino County's, and we've come to speak on behalf of over 1,700 members throughout San Bernardino County, a good portion of whom reside up here in the high desert. We come in support of the, the Sterling Capital Project facility, which will bring many well-paying jo, union jobs to our community and our city. So, good, good, good jobs for local people who live here. Like I said, we're, we're looking, as I said, to, to give that injection to, to, of stimulus to our area. As you can see, all the, the proud people here in the orange shirts, right? And I said, and I'm proud to have them, as my, my brothers. We come, uh, if this project is delayed, you know, it translates to fewer jobs and opportunities for our union members that live up here in this community, and it means a loss of paying jobs that provide benefits for our families in, in this county. Like I said, we at the Labor's Union pride ourselves, uh, on our work and our commitment to safety and look forward to completing this project on time and under budget. We need more local jobs like this here in the city of Victorville, so please support it and let us get to work. And like I said, it's, it's, it's hard to come by and, and projects up here, so every, anytime there's a chance to lock in a, a project like this that's going to put men and women to work, to provide for the families here, instead of having them drive down the hill, or go to Orange County, or go to, go to Irvine, or San Diego, like I said, anytime we get a chance to, to fight for a job here, you guys, we're going to fight like heck to get it because our members depend on it. So, we thank you and, uh, hope you up with this project.
I have a card from Angel Esparza.
A good afternoon, uh, Chairman and, uh, members of the panel. Just like to say, uh, on behalf of the, you know, Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, uh, I'm here to represent our membership of, uh, 10,000 members that live in the inland empire, and a majority of them do live in San Bernardino County, so, uh, we have a, a large number of members who do reside up in the high desert. Uh, most of these individuals here, these brothers and sisters, they do reside, as well as myself, in the high desert. So, uh, we're here to, uh, to be in favor of this project here, uh, at the Georgia Air Force Base. Uh, I could say in my 21 years as a union carpenter, I've had one job up here, and that was a federal prison in Victorville. So, I proudly built that, and I, I could say this job is across the street. I'm glad to see some grassroots, uh, some structure, some growth out here coming to the high desert, as well as these members here. So, we strongly support this project, and we thank you for taking that into consideration. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak to us on agenda item number one? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the commission for determination.
I'd like to recommend that the planning commission accept the recommendations from staff for this, uh, Sterling Capital Investment Project, and adopt the, um, the following actions made by the staff.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wells, with a second by Vice Chair Marsh, to approve case PLN 17 dash 00028 as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, that's been approved. Congratulations and good luck on that. Okay, agenda item number two, staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman Kurt, fellow Commissioners. Item number two is case PLAN 18 dash 00023. It is a tentative track map with a proposed mitigated negative declaration to allow for the development of a 17-lot single-family subdivision. This is located west of and abutting Second Avenue between Country Ranch Court and Silica Drive, just south of the intersection of Country Ranch Court and Second Avenue. Uh, this project has gone through a full, um, environmental review with a proposed mitigated negative declaration. Um, when it was routed through the state clearinghouse, we did receive comments from, uh, uh, United, uh, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and so we have some added, uh, conditions and mitigation measures that were distributed to the commission. They're also available in the lobby for any of the public, but essentially these, uh, conditions add, uh, mitigation for any, uh, potential relocation of biological resources, implementation of a, uh, education program on. implementation of a, uh, education program on site, and also pre-construction testing requirements. Uh, they're added as, uh, mitigation measures, um, in the, uh, attached mitigated negative declaration, and also as conditions of approval in, uh, the resolution. Uh, as far as the site plan is laid out, um, I'm sorry, the tentative map, um, this is a basic seventeen lot subdivision with a cul-de-sac. Um, uh, as you can see where Country Ranch Court is, uh, this is almost a replica of what Country Ranch Court is, uh, but instead of lots fronting on Second Avenue, uh, they will all front onto Country Ri- uh, to a local street, uh, which will be, uh, named. Uh, with that, uh, staff recommends approval, uh, by taking the action to adopt the attached mitigated negative declaration with a mitigating, mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project, and adopt resolution P dash twenty dash zero zero two, approving the tentative map case PLAN eighteen dash zero zero twenty-three, subject to the attached conditions of approval, including the updated mitigating, uh, mitigation measures and, uh, mitigation measures that were adopted in the resolution as well. And staff's available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on, on this one?
I have a weird one. How do we go about naming the street? How do they do that? Do they let the, do they let the developer just up, up, make, do an application for the name of the street, or?
In this case, uh, if it's, the developer does have the ability to request a street name. If they don't, uh, it's, uh, selected off of the approved street name list, so it, at one point, um, we brought forward to the commission a, a complete list of approvable street names, and so developers have the ability to just pick off that list.
Sometimes they have a theme for the track and they do that.
Correct, yeah, and if they can't pull a theme from the approved street name list, then they'll, uh, we'll note that, um, in the staff report to you that it's, uh, that it's, uh, a new name that wasn't approved from the street name list, so it's something that you, you would take action on.
I told you it was a dumb question.
That was a good one.
Okay, I'll open up the, um, public hearing on agenda item number two. Uh, does the applicant, uh, want to speak with us? Nope. Anyone else that would like to speak to us on item number two? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Chairman Kurtz, I move for the approval of staff re- recommendation of the tentative track.
A second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Huber, with a second by Vice Chair Marsh, to approve case PLAN one eight dash zero 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 two three as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, that's been approved. Moving on to item number three, please.
Agenda item number three is case PLAN eighteen dash zero 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 twenty-four. It is a tentative track map with a proposed mitigated negative declaration to allow for the development of a seventeen lot, single-family subdivision. This is located west of and abutting Second Avenue between, uh, Country Court, uh, and Silica Drive, just north of the intersection of Silica Drive and Second Avenue. This is actually located just south of item two that we, that was just approved. Um, similar design, this has, um, a seventeen lot cul-de-sac, uh, design, and it received the same comments from, uh, the Department of Fish and Wildlife, uh, so staff is recommending that we, uh, adopt additional mitigation measures, uh, so by doing that, staff recommends approval, uh, by adopting the attached updated mitigated negative declaration with an updated mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project, and also adopting resolution P dash twenty dash zero zero two, approving tentative track map case PLAN eighteen dash zero 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 twenty-three, subject to the attached updated conditions of approval. Staff's available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on this one? Okay, I'll open up the, uh, public hearing on agenda number three. Is the, uh, representative, or anyone else here would like to speak to the commission? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Yes, Chairman Kurtz, I'll move for staff recommendation of the tentative track. But it sure seems funny to, I've been doing this for twenty-five years, and this is the first time.
We're going to save at least two minutes per meeting on that one.
Yeah.
Second?
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Huber, with a second by Commissioner Wells, to approve case PLAN one eight dash zero 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 two four as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's been approved. Agenda item number four, staff report, please.
Thank you, Chairman Kurtz, fellow commissioners. Item four is case PLAN nineteen dash zero 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 one seven. It is a site plan and conditional use permit with an environmental exemption to allow for the construction of an approximately three thousand square foot convenience store, gas station, and accessory car wash with a conditional use permit and a finding of public convenience or necessity to allow for beer and wine sales for off-site consumption. This is located at the northwest corner of Roy Rogers Drive and Civic Drive. Um, staff would like to note that there is an add-on, uh, that was distributed to the commission, also available in the lobby, uh, regarding additional conditions, uh, that pertain to, uh, tobacco product and paraphernalia. Uh, these are straight out of the, um, Victorville Municipal Code, um, but just added as conditions so the applicant's aware of these requirements. Um, also, there was, um, some inadvertent typographical errors that needed to be struck from the, uh, resolutions, so there's also updated resolutions. Uh, but, in summary, the project, um, is part of the Desert Sun, uh, uh, plazas, and it's, uh, going to incorporate the same circulation driveway access, uh, for the future build-out of that center. Uh, it meets all municipal code standards, and therefore, uh, staff recommends approval to, uh, by taking the action to find the project categorically exempt under section one five three three two of the California Environmental Quality Act entitled Infill Development Projects, and adopt resolution number P dash twenty dash zero zero four, approving the fueling station conditional use permit portion of case number PLAN nineteen dash zero 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 one seven, subject to the attached updated conditions of approval. And, uh, by adopting resolution number P dash twenty dash zero zero five, approving the site plan portion of case number PLAN nineteen dash zero 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 one seven, subject to the cat- attached condition, conditions of approval, and finally adopt resolution number P dash twenty dash zero zero six, approving the alcohol sales conditional use permit portion of case PLAN nineteen dash zero zero one seven, with a finding of public convenience or necessity, subject to the attached updated conditions of approval in the memo that we've provided. Uh, with that, uh, staff's available if you have any questions.
Any questions of staff?
Yeah, um, so, there's a bit of a homeless issue right around there, so, uh, is the trash enclosure going to be contained and no access without a key?
Yes, the, uh, development and the site plan conditions, um, requires that, that it's a fully enclosed, uh, with wrought iron, uh, to prevent any, um, unauthorized access.
I'll go ahead and open up the, uh, public hearing on agenda item num- number four. Is the applicant representative here to speak to us? Welcome.
Hello, I am Tanya Woolridge with Bose Development. I'm the applicant and the developer of this project. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for being so collaborative and helping us get to this point. Um, I have my architect, my civil engineer, and some, uh, development people from our department to answer any questions that you or the public might have.
Does anybody have questions for the applicant? Like not, thank you. Anyone else here to speak to us on item number four? Okay, I'll go ahead and, uh, close the public hearing on four and bring it back to the commission.
I'll make a recommendation, um, approving the staff's recommendation for, um, this project, including the attached, uh, conditions.
We have a motion by Commissioner Wells, with a second by Commissioner Huber, to approve case PLAN one nine dash zero 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 one seven as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's been approved. Good luck with your project over there, thank you. Agenda item number five, please.
Thank you. Agenda no- item, item five is case PLAN nineteen dash zero 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 five one. It is a variance request with an environmental exemption to allow for a sixty-foot tall freeway-oriented pylon sign on property zone C two general commercial. This is located at one two one eight zero Mariposa Road. As the planning commission recalls, they acted to approve a Chick-fil-A restaurant at this location at their February hearing. Uh, the applicant is, um, following with, uh, requests to allow for an additional signage, uh, due to, uh, a unique circumstance, uh, with some of the freeway exposure, uh, they feel is not, um, to the same level as some of their adjacent, uh, um, restaurants, or just adjacent commercial development in general. Uh, the proposal is mainly based on the obstruction, uh, this sign, a, a forty-foot sign, uh, wouldn't be able to be seen over the overpass, and also, uh, mature trees to the north which restrict, uh, sightlines for traveling, for travelers coming southbound on Interstate fifteen. Uh, this is documented in the staff report, uh, to sh- to demonstrate the unique circumstances of the, the parcel. Um, staff also noted, uh, the pros and also the cons, um, that this action could, uh, propose, could mean for future requests. Um, I would like to note that it, it, if the, if the commission takes action to approve this, uh, by doing so, it in itself does not set a precedent. Uh, anyone that would want to request a sixty-foot sign, uh, would have to demonstrate and justify their own unique circumstances with their property, and would have to request a variance of the commission, uh, to approve that. Uh, but before you today is, um, a list of pros and cons, um, and therefore, uh, staff recommends the planning commission take one of the two actions. Either approve the action by, uh, finding the project categorically exempt per sequo section one five three one one accessory structures, and adopt resolution P dash twenty dash zero zero seven, approving the variance portion of case PLAN nineteen dash zero zero five one, subject to the attached, uh, conditions, or by taking an action to adopt resolution number, uh, P dash twenty dash zero zero seven, which is exhibit two, uh, which would deny the variance portion of case PLAN nineteen dash zero zero five one. I would like to note that we did receive one, uh, comment, which was distributed to the, uh, planning commission, um, and is also available, uh, but it was just, um, it was an adjacent property, uh, that was noticed that was, uh, seeking more input. I did reach out and leave a voicemail, but I haven't heard back. Uh, but with that, um, staff's available if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. Um, any questions of staff? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Is the applicant's representative here?
Good evening, thank you so much for taking the time to hear our request this evening. Uh, my name's Kelsey Wu, I am Chick-fil-A's entitlement consultant, and this is Steve Schwartz with Chick-fil-A. He's the principal development lead for this project. Thank you, Scott, for your work in helping us to refine this variance request. As some of you might know, we did submit for this variance alongside with the site plan review, which was approved last month, but we really wanted to solidify and add some specifics for this request in order for you guys to feel comfortable moving forward with approving it, not feeling that it would set a precedent for other sites in the area. So with that in mind, uh, we did work on providing some additional specifics. We provided further grading data and elevations, both for our site, as well as for the freeway overpass in question, and so that data is included in the findings we've provided for approval. We also provided photos and a signage exhibit from our signage company. They did some flagging, looking at the nearby vicinity, and they provided some really good visuals on why we are requesting the sixty-foot variance. And then we provided distances as well, from the overpass to our proposed signage location. And really, our goal with this is to provide you guys with the specificity needed to move forward with an approval. A couple of the reasons why we are really requesting this signage is because of the orientation of our site, both that it is further from the overpass, and it's further west of the adjacent restaurants, which means that the higher overpass slope as it moves west really impacts our site a lot more dramatically. And, uh, in addition to that, we have an increased horizontal difference, as well as lower grade on site. So, the increased sign height that we're requesting today will allow safer vehicular travel, we believe, allowing vehicles visiting our Chick-fil-A site to have sufficient time to exit that northbound freeway exit in particular. I know that one of the noted cons for this was that staff noted it would be possible for applicants to drive past and then exit on that next exit and come back down south, but we really do want to make this a convenient location for our guests. Speed of service is something we are known for, um, as Chick-fil-A, and so we believe that making it possible for guests to safely exit the Bear Valley Road northbound exit will really be a great way to have a fair advertising privilege. So, we believe that this will give us those comparable advertising privileges. We appreciate your guys' willingness to hear this request, and, uh, we look forward to coming to Victorville with Chick-fil-A. At this time, unless there's any other comments from Steve, I think we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Is there any, uh, questions from the commission?
Uh, not so much a question, I, that intersection there on Bear Valley Road is a terrible intersection. Yeah, I'm willing to bet you guys are going to get just as much clientele off the other off-ramp as this one, but I, but I, I'm okay with the sign.
Understood. Now, I will say that from the southbound fifteen, there also is obscured visibility, um, with the mature trees, so that was another reason, both wanting to acknowledge the fact that a lot of guests are probably heading up north through Victorville, this will allow them kind of the opportunity to, to get off on that exit, um, but thank you for that. Happy to answer any other questions.
No, thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much for your time.
Is there anyone else here to speak to us on agenda item number five?
Hello, everyone. Uh, thank you for having me today. Uh, this is the first time I've ever been to any type of council meeting or, uh, planning meeting, so, um, bear with me here. Uh, my name is Sean McBrer. I am representing the KFC location, which is across the street from where the Chick-fil-A is going to be built. Um, and the reason I'm here today is, uh, to fight the, uh, planning of increasing the height of this sign. Um, when we built our locations, we were given only a certain amount of height we could put our signs at. Um, you know, I think all businesses should pretty much be held to that same, um, to the same height, and, uh, you know, I, I, I think it'll substantially impact our business, our local business. We've been up here for over thirty years, you know, we've been here a long time. We just remodeled our restaurant literally weeks ago, and, um, you know, if, if something like this would have been approved for us, we would have been able to put up a larger sign. Um, so I feel like it's unfair to the surrounding businesses if this gets approved. Um, we do have obstructed view from the freeway overpass as well, coming from both the northbound and southbound sides, so, um, you know, I just would like to state my comment and hope that you guys take it into consideration.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and I'll bring it back to the commission for any discussion and determination.
I feel that we're not setting a precedent here. I appreciate the pictures that you took. It gives me confidence that we can, I feel confident we can approve the variance without any precedent of problem.
I was just curious on something. Maybe you can kind of help me, Scott, up. You might have this information kind of off the cuff based on what our neighbor friend has just shared with us. Can you remind us what the height standards are for a non freeway-fronting property versus a freeway-fronting?
Yeah, so for a property such as KFC which doesn't front Interstate fifteen, it would allow for up to a twenty-four-foot sign. That's the maximum allowable sign height that they could have. It's typically when it's under two acres in size, it should be limited to a monument sign unless they have some visibility issues. But the code's not structured in a manner for parcels that don't front the freeway to have large signs that are visible from the freeway.
But if they do and it's a certain, that's typically twenty-four.
Correct, yes, that's the maximum by right.
And we're forty on freeway is the code. Okay. Any other questions, discussions, or thoughts? I had one thought I did, you know, I do see the point the applicant is making with some of those challenges and I think, you know, in my career being here on Planning Commission for many years, I think this is maybe only the third variance I've actually seen in this city, so it is fairly unique in my opinion. And I think that's important. And so I looked at this, you know, pretty heavily because it is so unique and variances are, you know, not easy to get or find for entitlement-wise. The big thing for me that I think I would want to lean towards approving a variance is really the tree growth on the north side of the property. It's pretty substantial and I'm really familiar with the area and that really blocks quite a bit of visibility for, you know, any businesses that are going to be there that has their forty-foot by right because they're freeway-frontage, yet it doesn't do much good there with all those trees, so I would be willing to vote in favor of variance. Any other comments?
One comment. Just for clarification now, was stated as far as there's different elevation standards for the signage, but if applicant or the owner or whatnot wanted to apply for a variance, then they could on the individual case, right?
Yes. Yeah, so anyone has the ability to apply for a variance. Ultimately, it's up to the Planning Commission or if it's appealed to City Council to demonstrate what those special circumstances are. You have to show that there's special circumstances that are depriving you of the same exposure, in this case signage exposure, that some of your neighboring properties enjoy.
Basis is a level playing field.
Everyone has the ability to apply, but I wouldn't say that it's a level playing field because most parcels don't demonstrate a special circumstance.
That's why I haven't seen it much, you know?
I would just like to add that mainly the reason why I would consider approving this is because of the trees blocking even the existing sign that's there now from the prior business. Since that's not on this business's property, they have no control about those trees and if it does block the public seeing where they are when they're traveling, other than that, I would see them to have the same height as the others for uniformity, but because those trees are somewhat part of this blockage, then I would agree to allow them the sixty-foot.
So, Scott, what was the height again across the street? What's the height limit again?
The maximum height for a commercial parcel that doesn't front the freeway, just standard development, is twenty-four feet. I did pull up just a street view of KFC and it appears that they have an older non-conforming sign that exceeds twenty-four feet. I think they're probably more like forty, but so, but our current code standard is twenty-four feet for parcels that don't front a freeway.
So they're already up above our current standard?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, well, I was gonna recommend that they get a variance, but it looks like they've already, they're already up there. That's all I have.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we can look for a motion from someone.
I recommend we use staff recommendations for the variance.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Huber with a second by Commissioner Harriman to approve case P L A N one nine dash zero 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 five one as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for that and that has been approved. Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item Number Six, New Business.
Thank you, Chairman Kurtz. Item number six is related to the online broadcasting of our Planning Commission meetings. Just to give you some history, back in 2013 is when the Planning Commission first authorized the video publication, which is similar to what the City Council was doing, which provides audio of our meetings, also provides the visual display of the graphics that you see on your screen. Since then, in 2019, the City Council also added a three-sixty-degree video feed that they post on YouTube, so we just wanted to make you aware of that. That is an option that would not cost any additional funds for the city to enact for this meeting. So staff's recommending either we continue with no change or if you want to, for future, to make this in compliance with City Council publication, you can add that YouTube broadcast. So we're here if you have any questions.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody have any preferences on this?
Well, I do. I think it would be beneficial to the public that they too could not only hear our audio but see our visuals they do with City Council. I know we don't have many people to show up in person, but if you look back on the website, all you hear is audio and the displays and maybe it'll bring out more people's interest to come and see about what we plan for our city. They have a visual as well. And then too, if it doesn't have any cost to it, why not?
I agree with you. You know, anything that helps the perception of the city, especially since we kind of already have it, you know, in place. I noticed quite a difference when I started looking at the YouTube version of the City Council meetings, where before you couldn't even see who was who and when speakers would come up, you couldn't really, couldn't get as much out of it without seeing the people and sometimes their gestures and how they're talking, you know, how they're speaking and... So I did enjoy that more and I found it more beneficial to watch the meetings and I would assume that would be the same case here. Any other thoughts on this?
No comments.
Do we need to take a vote on it or just give a guidance, recommendation?
Yeah, if you can, I just need to know that the majority is in consensus and that staff can move forward.
I believe myself and Commissioner Wells are okay in leaning towards allowing, you know, the YouTube video like City Council. Commissioner Marsh?
Oh, I'm okay with it. I mean, for me personally, I mean, I've always listened to the audio whenever. Anyway.
You feel there's any negatives to it?
No, I don't think there's any negatives. I mean, if we're gonna do it, I guess I gotta smile more. But I mean, I don't think that there's any negatives.
Huber's gonna need a lot of makeup now.
Not long.
You guys okay with that or you have any preference?
I'm okay with it.
Any good, bad, or ugly on it?
I'm okay.
That we need to know?
No, not at all. I'm okay. I have noticed a difference too, if you watch the council meeting on the city video compared to the YouTube, so. I have no problem.
And we don't have a lot of people here, a lot of time, most of the items, but sometimes there are a lot of people here and there's a lot of testimony and if people are at home watching, it is nice to turn that and see who's speaking and you get a little bit more of a feel and a dynamic and emotion from the speaker instead of just plain audio. So, yeah, I think that would be the recommendation. Towards YouTube, it'll still be both of them, right? YouTube video and the gracious Gronicus?
Yes, if that's what you like, yeah, we could keep it the same on our Gronicus system where it shows the displays and the audio and then if they want to see visuals, they can, of people, they can look at the YouTube.
Have the thread to access the YouTube.
Yeah, so on our city website, there is a link to both at the same site.
Okay, then that would be the direction.
Okay, thank you.
In compliance with the Brown Act, it's necessary to make time available for members of the public to address us with anything that falls in our subject matter jurisdiction. And I see that there is no one here, so we will move on to Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Wells?
Yes, last week I attended the Planning Commission Academy in Sacramento from March fourth to the sixth. I found it to be very informative, more defined to being a planning commissioner. They talked, it was two or more sessions on SEQA, got to meet other planning commissioners and hear some of their call on being a planning commissioner and how their city operates in very similar to ours. And giving, talking, listening to the laws and policies and things like that that we as a planning commission must pay attention to. So I was very thankful to have attended and we'll keep a copy of the, a lot of PowerPoints were put out there, which what they spoke, the presentations were spoken from. So those are available to anyone, I would think, and so I plan to keep them downloaded and refer to them if I have a question on any of the issues that came up or the presentations.
Yes, many, many years ago, we had a variance in the city and there was no sign there. The guy wanted to put the higher sign on overpass and I recommended we put a blown-up, the height that he wanted, and then we took pictures of it from different avenues. So, and I don't remember if we gave him the variance or not, but that's been twenty-five years ago. But we did, I recommended to put the blown-up and he did and City Planning Commission staff took pictures of it. I think we approved it. I have no other comments.
Harriman?
I'm just gonna reiterate what Commissioner Wells said. I thought the academy was very, very informative. I learned a lot about the Brown Act. I learned a lot about grants. I learned a lot about taxes, which I thought I already knew a lot about, but I thought it was great and I'm actually looking forward to going to another one. So keep looking for them and I'm ready to go. I learned a lot. I learned, I really did.
Special meaning so they could give us reports for...
That's not... That's not a bad idea. I mean, at least you know if people are paying attention then when they go.
Yeah, glad you enjoyed that one.
Oh, by the way, I got to grab a Sacramento King Philadelphia Seventy-Sixer game, was five blocks down the street. Complained to the Carlsbad Planning Commission that there's nothing to do and the guy says, "Well, the basketball game's five blocks down the street." I just walked down there, bought a ticket and bought a game.
Perfect.
It wasn't canceled because of Corona.
Okay, any comments from staff members?
I just wanted to give a brief update. You're gonna start seeing and hearing an outreach campaign for the 2020 census that the city's gonna be rolling out. Commissioner Paul Parmarsh is part of the Complete Count Committee that was put together, which is city staff and also community members, but we were given some funds from the state since the state realizes the importance of having an accurate count for the state of California, so we're using that funds to outreach and connect with those hard-to-count populations. But you'll see some poll banners that are gonna be put up throughout the city, radio advertisements, we're going to a couple of events to promote the census. We also have a city website and also a question-action center that's right here at the front entry to City Hall. So if you come across people in the next month as they get inundated with information on the census, if they have questions, you can steer them to City Hall, to the Action Center, and also to our city website for resources.
Now, is that something that is typical, most municipalities have outreach programs or is this a little bit more unique for Victorville, the level we're doing it?
I know that there's a lot of cities out there that have participated. The county is the one that is administering the grants, but I'm not aware of other high desert cities that are participating, but there's also nonprofits that are doing outreach in this area as well. So it's typical, there's a lot of cities that are doing similar campaigns. Uh, so it's, it's typical. There's a, there's a lot of cities that, that are, are doing si- similar campaigns.
And is there any, um, is there any estimate of, of the length of that training? Is that a, would that be a half-day, a couple hours? Wha- what do you think? Yeah, if it's at two, then it's, it's, it's an afternoon thing, so it's not a, I didn't know how in-depth the training was. Um, I'd, I'd be interested in, um, attending that. Is there...
Yeah, I would, I would too.
Yes.
I, I did, uh, have a conversation with Charlene, and she said it was a video that was gonna be, uh, shown. She mentioned that she could send the link out too, so if, if it's hard to get to City Hall and you want to participate or not, you know, form a quorum and have to advertise it, we could also send a link so you could watch. It's a video that'll, uh, give some information. Now, the downside of that is that you won't have somebody there, um, to, uh, field the questions. Like, you won't be able to field the questions from your home.
It's already happening and it won't, you know, sorry. Have to be a re-notice or anything now, or this is just added on to that notice?
Point meeting instead.
Okay, let's do it. Thanks. So that's it. Thank you, everybody. Uh, meeting adjourned.